Of August 25th, 2010, regular session. I hate to say that this is seems to be the end of summer, but this week we're supposed to get better, better weather coming up, just in time to go back to school. Sunshine out there. Our first item would be, oh, a roll call. Mr. Veal is not in attendance yet. Mr. Higgins is not here yet. Mrs. Carroll will not be here tonight, is unable to attend tonight. Otherwise, everyone is present. Thank you. There are 11 items for consideration on the consent agenda, but because of absenteeism, and we're going to separate them, we're going to separate some of the items out. Okay? So what we're going to do is we're going to approve the minutes of the regular session of June 9th, 2010. And I'll let Mrs. Benton start on that.
Okay. I'm going to actually request that you, we remove item 2E from the consent agenda this evening, and so there will only be 10 items for consideration on the consent agenda. And before we can begin, I'd just like to welcome the new secretary of the school committee, Kim Richardson, who joins us this evening. We hope she has a long stay. Welcome to Wilmington.
Welcome, Kim.
Thank you.
So the first item is the approval of the minutes of June 9th, regular session.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 9th. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the regular session minutes of June 9th, 2010.
Do we have a second, Mr. Marchese? Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous? Kim? Thank you.
Recommend approval of the minutes of the regular session of August 11th.
We can do the executive session, too, at the same time.
And the executive session? Not for release at this time until we have signed contracts.
Good. Okay. Mr. Marchese.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committing, school committee meeting on August 11, 2010, and also the executive session minutes not for lease for the meeting on August 11, 2010.
Okay. Do we have a second? Dr. Quick, thank you. All those in favor? That will be three. Kim, in favor?
One abstention.
One abstention. Mr. Hayes.
You need to record Mr. Hayes's name next to this abstention.
Thank you.
We have our four field trips before you this evening. I think we should recommend that we take them individually. The first one is the annual middle school eighth grade trip to New York in the fall. Two trips to support the number of students at the eighth grade level. And I recommend approval.
I would entertain a motion to approve the New York City Middle School field trip. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the New York City Middle School field trip.
And do we have a second? Mr. Marchese. Okay. Do we have any questions or comments on this field trip? Mr. Marchese.
I just think it's great, this trip here, where we have this information about the Teardrop Memorial. I never even knew about this. This is, that's absolutely amazing. So the fact that the kids can go and experience this and see this firsthand is absolutely amazing. So I think it'll be a good trip for me.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous? Kim, thank you.
We have three field trips for the high school. First one is New York City trip. Sponsored by the Music Department for the High School Lamplighters, Drumming Guild, and Conseco Choir.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the high school, New York City field trip. Kim, this is, Mr. Higgins has just arrived. Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the high school, New York City field trip.
Okay. Do we have a second? Dr. Quick. Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments on that field trip? Mr. Marchese.
I just happened to notice in my packet, there was, there was only one bid received for this. Is that right? Or? Because I didn't see a comparison.
There was Kaleidoscope and Haflon Tours.
Oh, there were two? Oh, there were. Okay.
Yeah, right here.
Okay. Oh, they're right there on the front.
It's on the cover sheet for Mr. Tracy.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor of the New York City High School field trip? Unanimous? Kim? Thank you.
Next trip is Madrid, Southern Spain. There were three bids.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the Madrid, Southern Spain educational field trip. Dr. Quick. Motion to accept the Madrid, Southern Spain educational field trip. Okay? And Mr. Marchese, a second?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Yes? Yeah?
Is this open to all students or just to kids taking Spanish?
Yes. Mr. Tracy.
Yeah. Initially, they open it up to the students taking the specific language course. If there are extra seats, they'll open it up to other students.
Thank you.
And this one would be February vacation. So this isn't during, actually, they miss one day, it looks like. Okay. Just one day, Friday. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous? Kim? Thank you.
And the last trip is Switzerland, Switzerland and Italy.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the Switzerland and Italy trip from the high Mr. Marchese.
Make a motion to approve the Italy-Switzerland trip for the high school.
Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? This one also is February vacation. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one? This is a, this is a terrific trip. I've been on this trip. It's excellent. Okay. All those in favor of the trip? Unanimous? Kim? Thank you. Great. Thank you. And thank you for all the information, Mr. Tracy, to your, the people and Ms. McMinum. All the information you provide for us, it was really helpful in making the decision. So thank you very much. Okay. Our next item of business, superintendent, oh.
We have three acceptance of gifts. The first one, I'm pleased to inform you that on June 21st, Sue McDonough, our English Language Learner teacher, received information from Targa Corporation that she had been awarded a $2,000 grant to fund an ELL family literacy program. And we're very excited to have this grant. Sue has done research all summer and found a great bookstore in Concord that has multicultural books, and she's going to hope to do a family library. And we're researching purchasing a netbook that EL families could use, borrow. The library has free Wi-Fi, so that for students who don't have access to a computer at home could use some of the software programs that will help them learn English quickly. So we will come back with the list of what they end up deciding. She's going to meet with the parents to decide.
Great. Thank you. Do you want to do all three, or we'll just?
Okay. Second one is Rotary Club donation, $2,800 donation from the Rotary Club to be used for teacher technology integration, primarily for the purchase of equipment. We'd like to thank Debbie O'Brien and John Darty, the Wilmington Rotary, for thinking of us again this year. As they wrote in their letter, the Rotary model is service above self, and they're always thinking of the Wilmington Public Schools. I recommend acceptance of this donation. And lastly, the Cassett Board of Directors is pleased to grant us $17,000 for the school year to fund our Italian program at the high school.
I'll accept a motion to entertain a motion for the acceptance of the gifts, $2,000 from Target Grant, $2,800 from the Rotary Club, and $17,000 from Cassett. Mr. Higgins.
I move to approve the gift of $2,000 from the Target, $2,800 from Wilmington Rotary, and $17,000 from Cassett.
Do we have a second? Robert? Mr. Hayes? Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments on the gifts? Mr. Marchese.
Just a couple of quick ones. In terms of the Target Corporation, do we actually apply for that, or they just identify the school?
Yes, she had to fill out, it was a competitive grant.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, I don't know if they just identified the school. And also, the Rotary Club, was that just on their behalf, or did they actually contact us and see what we needed?
They contacted us. Neil Ellis, our IT director, has developed a very strong relationship with the Wilmington Rotary, and John Darty is always calling Neil if they have a little bit of money.
Okay. Excellent. No, I think they're great. And obviously, the Cassett is just a renewal of our Italian program, so I think this is phenomenal.
Your Rotary question kind of dovetails off of what I was thinking. In the past, we always tried to make sure that if one school in town received a gift of this magnitude, the other school was taken care of also. But if he has a list, that means that when we get these gifts, they're being distributed.
That's why the technology has to all go through Neil, so that it's, we have parity.
Great. That's excellent. Any questions? All those in favor of accepting the gifts? Unanimous? Kim? Mr. Veal? Mr. Veal? Excuse me, this is our new secretary, Kim.
Hi.
Mr. Veal has arrived.
Sorry, I'm early.
All right. Here we go. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
I have three items on the agenda this evening. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone back to the new school year, and thanks to, I guess, Mr. Cushing. There's a wonderful sign outside the Roman House welcoming our new staff here, and there will be 36 new staff members in this library tomorrow for new teacher orientation. And we hope that they have a long and happy stay in Wilmington, and we'll be inviting them to the two meetings in September for you all to meet. I want to commend all of the principals and curriculum leaders for their, the hires that they have made. I think you will agree with me when you see the credentials, that the depth and breadth of experience that our new teachers bring to us is really going to add to the Wilmington School community. So I want to thank all the administrators for their hard work. As always, down to the wire, you get resignations. We had a resignation today of an ed assistant at Shoshin, so we're scrambling to fill that. But other than that, we're in really good shape. And we are looking forward to welcoming 3,700-plus students on Tuesday to the Wilmington Public Schools. As everyone knows, the first grade through 12th grade reports on Tuesday, kindergarten the following week. Bus routes for students in first through 12th grade are on our website and will be in the papers tomorrow. Also, for kindergarten, we do not, and I've got to correct this with the kindergarten parents, I forgot this when I was doing my alert now message out last night, but we do not print the bus routes for the kindergarten students because it's individual addresses and there's access to the website. And so we give that out at the kindergarten orientation next week to the parents. Want to commend Susan Hademan for her leadership in really tackling one of the momentous tasks of the summer, and that's putting together the bus routes. And also remind all parents that the first couple of weeks, it does take some adjusting to traffic, and we still have parents in the elementary grades that love to take first pictures on the first day of school, children getting on and off buses, so it does slow the routes down. But we are in total communication with the buses at all times, and we'll make sure that everyone gets home safely. Opening of school report, just, I included my letter to the staff. You're all invited on Monday, and I hope you have RSVP to Maryland if you're going to be coming. Monday, breakfast in the middle school cafeteria at 8:00, followed by our greetings at 8:30. And then, this year, a change in the schedule, the new anti-bullying legislation mandates training. And I'm pleased to announce that Manji Daniels, the executive director of the Middle Partnership for Youth, and Marion Ryan, the council to the Middlesex District Attorney's Office, will be present doing training for all staff, including fruit service, bus drivers, custodians, ed assistants, secretaries, all of us. So that will be at 9:00. But for those of you that have to go on to jobs, there will be a five-minute break between the regular programs and the start of that, so that Manji can set up. So just let Marilyn know on tomorrow if you're going to be coming, so we make sure we have seats for you. We had a great Leadership Institute last week, led by Principal Tracy. It was a huge success. Andy Wa came, our school council, and did a workshop on changes that we needed to know about in laws. And then Eric did a wonderful workshop on Web 2.0 tools and actually got us all using WallWisher. In fact, we went, that afternoon, I went back and sent out a question to the extended leadership team about what they could do to bring our schools into the 21st century. So we are really, and Eric has volunteered to do a, some classes for the administrators, so we are really going to be moving into the 21st century. I'd like to, my dream is, would be to get all of you netbooks and do everything online at some point, so I'd like you to consider that. I think it'd be a great way to move into the 21st century.
I know, I know.
Don't be afraid.
I know, Robert. I'm the most reluctant of all, I'm sorry to say.
We had a school readiness meeting yesterday, and huge, huge thank you to the Department of Public Works and the Department of Public Buildings, who did yeoman work this summer. As you know, we had to empty out Woburn Street School to remove asbestos and do retiling. And there was many a skeptic, including moi, who didn't think we would get it all done in time and be ready to open, and actually, they were ahead of schedule. And teachers were actually invited to come back last week to set up classrooms. It was, they did a tremendous job, and I really hope you get to go over, stop in and see it. The school looks beautiful. They also did some changes to upgrades in, for lighting in parts of Woburn Street, also at the Beltwell. We had the fire alarm systems at the Wildwood and Shoshin, which will be completed in the next two weeks. Any work after tomorrow that needs to, after Friday that needs to be done will happen in the evening at Shoshin. We had some construction work over at Shoshin that was completed, some tarring of entrance ways at Wildwood. The ramp was fixed, and, I mean, at Woburn Street and at Wildwood, the entrance was also repaired. So a lot of work to, and if you look around the grounds of the schools, they all look beautiful, and crosswalks have been repainted, parking lots have been relined, and want to thank everyone who was involved. We are still looking for a couple of crossing guards, and if anybody's interested in the job, please contact Officer Moon. There's a crossing guard position at the Beltwell West, and then one at Middle School. And it's a great job for parents, and we really would love to have you come out and help us out, join the school. So if you're interested, please call Officer Moon.
Would it be morning and afternoon?
Yes.
Okay.
So the new teacher orientation is going to be led tomorrow by Bob Osnoy and Tricia Coffel, and Terry McDermott, who is, runs the museum, will actually be doing the commentary on our tour this year, that we're doing, taking the new staff on the bus around Wilmington.
Oh, my goodness. That's terrific.
She's excited that we invited her. I thought we planned to have a little history of Wilmington.
Absolutely.
I thought that we would give out Baldwin apples because of the, where they came from, and I learned that Baldwin apples do not, are not on the shelves until October. So we are handing out apples, but they're not Baldwin apples. But I've learned a lot of history about this. I sent Bob Osnoy on a field trip to Wilson's. He called me with about 12 different varieties of apples, and then proceeded to tell me there's no Baldwin until October, so. So that's, will be taking place tomorrow. Lastly, I want to say that beginning my fourth year as superintendent in the Wilmington Public Schools, I'm really excited about greeting the students and the staff next week. That is probably one of my favorite pieces of the job, is opening day of school. There's nothing more satisfying, seeing happy, smiling students getting off buses and happy, smiling parents who are glad to wave to their children. But I want to thank all the parents in Wilmington for really, for trusting us with their children, and I look forward to an exciting year. I'll talk more about my goals later in the agenda.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mr. Marchese.
Yes, Mrs. Benton, one thing I noticed in your report here, you had said that Mr. Tracy is stepping up to the plate a little bit and taking on some more responsibility?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. I should have mentioned that publicly. Yes. Yes. I have not filled the assistant superintendent position because frankly, the pool was thin as far as I was concerned. So I asked Mr. Tracy if he would take on the role of director of curriculum for sixth through 12, and he graciously accepted the position. And I think he, I thank you for pointing it out, because I think he's going to, he's already, has us all doing technology workshops and working with the middle school principal and curriculum team leaders. I think you're going to see some great things happening this year.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy.
Any other questions or comments? I would just want to say, Mrs. Benton's report tonight just sets the tone for this whole school year. I do not know of any other community, I could be wrong, but I don't know of any, who would take the new teachers on a bus tour through their community and gets, the teachers are all together for that experience and not individually seeing things. They're getting a flavor for what Wilmington is about and what it's like. And to have a member of the community, Terry McDermott, with all of the background knowledge that she has and her love of history, is just so important. She's a parent of children in our school system, you know, and she, she runs, she's put together those programs with the elementary schools and the Hardened Tavern, you know, and then to bring back Mr. Osnoy and Mrs. Coffel, two outstanding educators who we lost to retirement, although we can't feel badly for them. We feel badly for us. But I just think this just shows the quality of Mrs. Benton's thinking and trying to bring pieces of everything together and, with a humanitarian flair. And I want to thank you, Mrs. Benton, because this really sets the tone for the year, as far as I'm concerned. You've done a great job. And, Mr. Tracy, welcome aboard to an added responsibility.
So he will be sitting here at the table some evenings.
That will be perfect. Very good. Thank you.
And lastly, is our professional development plan and professional development handbook. And I will be bringing this back at the next meeting for a vote. I forgot that we have to vote this every year, it's the state requirement. The professional development handbook, I actually was thrilled to take back this year to do, because I missed doing it the past couple of years. This is online. The real meat of our program is online. All the courses that we offer through Wilmington University, we'll go out to the, the staff will go online to see. Actually, you can all see them as well. And we will be continuing our relationship with the NECC Collaborative, with Salem State, and with Northeast Consortium that offer courses to teachers for, for free. And it's a good resource for the staff.
Could you just, Mrs. Benton, this corresponds, page 29, I think it is, this corresponds now with the new teacher contract. And I think for the interest of the public, at last, we're making our, we're uniting our evaluations with progress for the teachers, with something so much more professional. Could you just give a tiny synopsis?
Very excited about, in fact, Joe Kaponas, the president of the Teacher Association, I am sending a joint letter out to the staff next week explaining this new professional development cycle, where we're really encouraging teachers, instead of, who are in professional status, instead of the old motto of a principal or supervisor going into the classroom on a one-shot deal to observe the teacher's lesson and then to write up a report, we're encouraging teachers to instead offer an intense project and design the project, something that, you'll hear more about it Monday in my speech, that connects to 21st century skills and deepens their understanding of their own instructional practices. So we're excited about this new evaluation. It has taken more than six years to get this in the contract. It started before I arrived in Wilmington, and I'm excited about it. In order to encourage the teachers to do that, and also part of our November 2nd full-day professional development day, which is one in which we're asking teachers, teams of teachers, to do projects around technology, integrating technology into their classroom, that teachers could use that as a kickoff for the Yale on Project for them. So we're going to give them time on the first CIT day. Parents always ask, what are teachers doing on release days? Well, teachers are turning into students on professional development days, and they will be having that time to put together their proposals.
Great. Thank you. So that these packets don't have to be redone again, can you please remember to bring these to the next meeting, because we'll be voting? Robert?
Can I ask two quick questions? And you've already sort of answered one of them. It seems, going through the plans in the handbook, it seemed like the assistant superintendent played a big role in the district's professional development, and I was just wondering if we were going to be okay in that regard, and it seems like we're certainly going to be okay.
But that happens, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And my second question is, I was just wondering, I went through this year's FY11 budget for the school department, and I went through each school and went to the professional development line item, and it looks like we have roughly $10,000 in professional development. And I was just wondering if that met the professional development committee's suggested budget?
There's actually $10,000 that is building-based.
Oh.
And then there is about $40,000 that is centrally, central office-based, out of my office, that we use to support professional development. But the real answer to your question is, there's never enough funds for professional development. I think any educator would tell you that. We're always looking to support teachers, and unfortunately, what happens is the fall requests all get funded, and then as we move along and the budget gets tighter and maybe transportation costs go up, specialty costs, we have to tighten, tighten up.
Yeah.
So we are trying to encourage principals to not always approve the same workshop for the same teacher every year and give other teachers an opportunity to professional development.
Excellent. And a related question, and I may have missed this one, too, but I, I went through all the schools and added up all the line items for the memberships and dues, and it was around $12,000 or so for this fiscal year. And I was wondering, I think that sort of ties into professional development a little bit, and I was just wondering what a lot of these memberships and dues are for?
For the middle school, elementary, and secondary principals associations, for the Massachusetts Association for curriculum and development, for our National Association also dues allows administrators to go to the one-week conference down the Cape, for example, which is an intense four-week of professional development opportunities. Trying to think of what other associations. Anything else?
NIES.
Oh, NIES, yeah, the NIES.
GNOES.
Right.
NCTE.
Membership. National Math Association, Science Associations.
And I guess just to...
It also gives us the geritals. I want to put that in.
Right, absolutely, sure. And I guess just to sum it up, I was glad to see that at least the aspects of the budget I was looking at, in terms of professional development and membership and dues, that it was, it was level-funded for this year, and that there was no decrease. So that's great to see.
And I have to say, from the community I came from, that there was no school budget support for memberships for professional organizations. So Wilmington is really, does well there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Anybody else? Our next item is all business, a change in the school calendar.
We inadvertently had planned a middle school conference day on a Jewish holiday, so we would like to change the fall conference to November 30th for the middle school. So I just need for the committee to approve this revised calendar.
I would accept a motion to approve the revised 2010-2011 schedule school calendar. Mr. Hayes?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised 2010-2011 school calendar.
Second, Mr. Higgins. Thank you. Any comments or questions about it? It's just like a housekeeping. Mr. Vale?
Well, I just think in the past, I think, I remember last year, I think we changed the calendar. I just want to make sure that parents and everyone else are getting notification as quickly as possible and...
This, actually, the one that I, I should have also mentioned that I did not send out any letters this year to staff or to parents, but am using Alert Now and the website. And I actually took the liberty of putting the new date, the new calendar on the website with my letter, so parents plenty would know what days the conferences are. But I will also ask principals to put it in their newsletters.
Okay, great. Any else?
I'm sorry, is Mr. Vale referring to the fact that the, the last day of school was changed? Or you're talking, no?
No.
No, I just remember, I think during the last school year, we had, we had a change in one of, in one of the issues, and it was just making the point that...
We changed the release date.
That the communications be made as aggressively as possible to everyone.
Yes.
Also, Mr. Hayes? Yep, that's all right. Okay, all those in favor of the revised schedule? Unanimous, Kim? Thank you. All right, yes, Mr. Vale?
Not looking to do with this calendar, but at prior meetings, I've raised a question wishing to explore the policy issues behind the calendar generally.
Wait, at the end of this...
Is there some process that we can come up with to actually do that?
At the end of this meeting, you and Mr. Hayes and I and the superintendent are going to come up with a date for us to meet, to get this policy subcommittee moving. So we can put that on our list.
Okay.
Policy subcommittee. Yep, thank you.
And, you know, I believe that we have some surrounding communities that tried to do it, that we can get research from. Just don't even try to do it, change the cal, the school calendar, and I'll get your researcher on that.
Sure. I don't expect it to be, one, I'm not sure we want to do it, and two, if we did, I'm not sure it would be easy.
Exactly.
But I, but I did want to ask the question.
Sure. Great. Okay, our next item of business is under new business, 2010-2011 SAT review.
You have fall SAT review course proposals from Mr. Tracy for English and mathematics.
We don't need a vote on this, this is just information.
No, just information.
Does anyone have any questions about them? Our next item is the superintendent's goals and the system goals for 2010-2011.
The, tonight I'm presenting for the first time my, my goals for the 2010-2011 school year and really believe that they always need to be, to include something to do with student learning and outcomes, leadership and planning, course finance and budget, facilities and space, and lastly, climate, climate and culture and technology. And have chosen to think about how we move this school system into the 21st century. And I think the number-one way that we can do that is with the new strategic plan that will be the focus of my work this year in putting together a new plan for the next five years for the Wilmington Public Schools. Interestingly, yesterday, there was a informational meeting here for the project manager for the high school. We had a hosting open house, and this room was filled, which surprised Mr. Righiro and Mr. Cara and me. But interesting, one of the questions was, have you begun your work on your next strategic plan? And afterwards, I was actually speaking with the gentleman about it, and I was telling him where we were with it, and he said, "My guess is that this plan got you where you are with the high school project." And I said, "You're absolutely right. I cannot take any responsibility for it. I was part of the process, but you're absolutely right." And, and he just was commended the school department on the plan. And I said, "You could be sure that that would be one of the main pieces of the next strategic plan." So, and I attached the fifth year of the strategic plan. Now, you notice that a lot of this is much shorter, Mr. Higgins, than it was five years ago.
Yep.
Hopefully, we'll complete all that we had started out to do. I think, you know, there's a couple of things that we really need to think about, and unfortunately, we don't have the staffing to do it, but we have to figure out a way to do that. And that's, and it involves a joint relationship between us and the town. And that's a strategic plan around the public building department and support, ongoing support for possibly renovation, I'm not saying anything new, but of the elementary schools, and keeping up a, a cycle of renovation for the elementary schools, because there's a lot that really needs, is going to need to be done down the road. The other piece is, we really need to think about how we can quantify electronically all that we own in the system. We do not have a good system for that, and we need to look at some kind of a program to purchase so that there's an inventory of everything that, we have it of all technology, but we don't have it of all furniture and equipment and books and all that. And I think we need to have, should have that.
Does anyone have any questions about the superintendent's? I'd just like to bring up that so much is happening this week and last week about Governor Patrick and the Department of Education and things that are changing that are eventually going to affect us. But one of the things that I know, every time I send them on to Mrs. Benton, she already knows, so, but this was Patrick Murray administration unveils Model Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. So that is a very timely, they have a joint committee on education that's talking about the implementation of anti-bullying legislation. So some of this is going to be directed by the state, and it's not going to be directed by us as a community. We're going to be having to...
We will be putting that on future agenda, and I will actually ask Principal McMiniman and some of her committee members to come. We have a committee that's been put together. We have standard, have created standard templates for the reporting of all bullying incidents. And there are two, so that forms are filled out for, on the victim and on the accused. And we have a process in place where we will have specific notebooks where all these reports are held so that when a, for example, the third graders move on to the intermediate schools, those notebooks go with, go to the next school, so we have a history. We're also going to be doing, parent, one of our goals this year is parent education, and we're going to be doing parent workshops on what bullying is all about because there's some really misunderstandings on the definition of bullying. And Mr. Tracy is coordinating that piece. We're going to have National Law Society students offering babysitting services to see if we can get more parents to, to the workshops. And we're looking to do a week of, my, my, my goal is to have a whole week of activities to involve the community because I do not believe this is a school issue, I think it's a community issue, and we need to have everybody involved. If you look at the statistics around bullying, the, the largest increase in bullying is cyberbullying, it's not happening on the schools, but the new legislation, we're responsible for it. So we really need to do a lot of educating. I'm also going to be meeting with Chief Begonis because one of the pieces of the legislation has to do with when reporting bullying to the police, and we have to get direction from the police department on how many incidents by one student they want us to report to the police. Very interesting around the state on the superintendent's network of talk of how that's being decided. So this, the Principal McMiniman and a group of administrators have worked all summer on the first steps of the, the plan. We also have Laura Stinson, who's been working with the curriculum and making sure that we have pieces in each of the grade levels, that's another requirement of the law. So we'll do a lot of public information settings on that, and maybe we can livestream our bully presentation so that we can get more parents to, to be able to see the workshops. I'm really into this technology.
Dr. Quick?
A couple of quick questions. You mentioned that you will have sort of, my assumption is that if, if, if these books with the information about the bullying, it will, each, each grade will have their own, therefore, they can go forward. And the second question is, I'll answer my own, but who is going to be in charge of holding those books?
The principal, it's state law, it's the principal's responsibility. And these books are not, will not be available to the public, but this is, but we have to have records. Anytime one of those forms is filled out, the parent will be called. So whether it's the accused or the victim, the, the parents will be called. And there's going to be a 360 after the investigation, another call to, to explain what has happened. So we'll, we'll be doing a lot of education around it.
Mr. Marchese?
Based on what the governor's asking today, some of these new models standards he wants, but aren't we way ahead of that already based on the work that we've already done in the spring to get our policy in place? And now we have our new handbooks we're going to be looking at tonight. It's already in our handbooks, and so we're way ahead of the curve. Just let the people know out there that we've done our homework and we're way ahead of the curve and that we're very proactive in this issue because we take this very seriously in Wilmington.
Yeah, some of my colleagues said, you know, why didn't I think of this, having the training on opening day? But the day the law was passed was the day I picked up the phone and called Roger Daniels and said, "What do you do on August 30?" So I'm thrilled that we're kicking it off that way. And Chief Begonis will also be with us on Monday, so I think we have a real show of community support.
Excellent. Anybody else? That's terrific. I just wanted to comment on this paper, on the goals. We have to keep in mind, this is the basis of the superintendent's evaluation in the spring. So you should keep this paper handy so that we know what's, you can follow along as she completes all of these at the highest level. Thank you. Okay, and now we're at the high school handbook. Tracy?
Yep. State law requires that the school committee approves the middle school and high school handbook for new members, just a point of information. We also have an elementary handbook for all the schools, it's online. And I will get you copies, but that doesn't have to come for approval. If you would acknowledge, Mr. Tracy?
Yes.
And talk about any changes?
Good evening, Mr. Tracy.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. We'll be glad to hear. Every year, I think that, I mean, this is like the sixth time we've gone through this, or seventh that I've been here, seven. And every year, I think, there can't be more to add. And every year, there's more to add. So, thank you.
And the, the crux of our additions are primarily based around legal changes and accreditation activity. Some of the other changes, I have to thank many of the members for picking up. Mr. Hayes, thank you very much for picking up some of the...
Sorry.
...typos, the $60 milk. It was a fundraiser, I'm sorry. But we did a lot of work in trying to align the middle school and high school handbook so the kids would have similar experiences over the past couple of years. We're getting closer. There are obviously differences along the way, but the high school now, right from the beginning, reflects our work on accreditation, the rubrics that we'll be utilizing because of accreditation and the, the process that we'll be following with kids in adding the scoring of these rubrics to kids over four years. So we wanted to start that, get that into the handbook initially, and really start to work with that. You'll see when the accreditation report gets presented, I believe at the next school committee meeting, I'm not positive, but I think that's when it's coming up. You'll see some of the recommendations that coincide with the changes that we've already made. So some of those are just kind of general items that we'll use as our foundational pieces. Chain of communication was added, I believe, to all year, all the handbooks. Great idea for us to be able to publish to parents, what do I do when this happens? Who do I call? The chain of command is probably one of the easier tools that I've seen for parents to be able to look quickly in the handbook, see what the issue is, the school is, and who the first person to call is, and how to get your problem solved. So I think it's worthwhile. Certainly, some of the other changes include, you know, social, the, the Facebook and the things outside of school, the electronic devices, electronic communications, use of some of those social tools. They are not going away. I think we're going to be, down the road, we're, we're still at the position of blocking, stopping, and kind of keeping it hidden and put away. And I think down the road, you'll see an evolution of how do we integrate this and make it useful to, to the school system and to parents and kids. So this is kind of an opening volley of, you know, we know it's there, but we have to control it right now, and then we'll work towards adding things like that. We, we, earlier in last school year, increased the credit structure for graduation requirements, starting with the current class that's reflected in here, to the additional math requirement, four-year math requirement, which begins to line us up with the new, newly-voted Massachusetts affiliation with the Common Core, the federal Common Core. And I think that's, again, another step in the, in the right direction towards aligning that. So you see that in there that's new. Some of the new language was added for bullying. We worked together with the middle school on how we were going to respond, what types of things we would do. And then, as you heard, Ms. McMiniman and her team this summer helped us to kind of clean that up and give us the forms and the, the process and approach that we need to be successful in, in getting that all to, to happen for us. And it'll be new, and it's something that I think we'll all work with and revisit and change along the way. Health Services was completely revamped this year. Doreen Crowe went through the entire thing, realigned it with some of the changes that the Health Department requires and some of the legal changes related to HIPAA, and, and had basically rewritten the whole thing. So that's why you see that whole thing in red, that whole section, which I think cleaned it up a lot and really gave it some better direction. And the rest of the things are smaller items that are related to typographical errors, word changes, smaller, even smaller issues of commas and periods and quotation marks. Like I said earlier, Mr. Hayes had caught a few dozen items that we missed, and I appreciate that because they were those things that you read over and over and over, and you can't see it. You know, it's like typing the word "student" and it comes out "studentet." It's, it's, it's one of those things that no matter how many times we go through it, we, we are still finding little bits and pieces. So I think we're, we're getting closer. But essentially, that is it. Everything else remains the same. Like I said, all the changes in the copies that you have are in red. And certainly, I'll entertain any questions if you have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Hayes?
I'm limiting myself to four questions. So, so page number 10, under academic information, and my, my question would be, if the vast majority of high school graduates go to college and college wants at least 10 credits in a foreign language, why not make that mandatory?
Future goal? It's going to cost us some money, point-blank. We have to add, my guesstimate is going to be three full-time teachers to the foreign language department. That's the initial problem. Where does the money come from and how do we address that? Also, languages, what types of languages do we want to offer? There has been some discussion. Certainly, the addition of Italian has been exciting for us, and our kids have really jumped on that. But certainly, we want to look at some other languages that kids will need as they get involved in colleges and international business and things like that. So the money piece, also space. I do not have another room to put a teacher in this building. As an example, period six this year, if you come into this building, there is not one empty room. Every single room, this is the first time this has happened, is taken. So it's, it's one of the things that we, we want to have happen and we think makes sense, given the Common Core, the advance to the Common Core, given what colleges are requiring of our kids. And, and it's gonna, it's gonna be something we'll have to meld with whatever happens with the building process, I think.
Thank you, thank you for that. Question number two, page nine, under the use of docs to search school property. I know that this is a, a new policy that I think was put in place last year by the school committee, and I was just wondering, just in general, how that's going? And specifically, I was wondering, can... And specifically, I was wondering, can you, do you have to have probable cause before asking for a dog search or can you just randomly do it?
I'll back up a little bit. This was a culmination of a lot of conversations with the police department, several of the school areas, area schools, systems that have put this together before we did. We put together the policy and decided to get it in place so that we could, in the future, move to that direction. We have not used it. In reality, we could say, yes, we're going to, on this date, bring in five dogs to search the premises. And I have to be clear, they're not searching individual kids or anything like that, but they do make sweeps of classrooms and depending on what the school system's looking for and what the law enforcement people expect, you know, it's an exercise for them as well. So we have not used it yet. Several schools in the area have successfully. And, you know, there are still a lot of caveats. You know, there's what you hope to find and what you really don't want to find. So I think there's, you know, we have to look at kind of the bigger picture and use it most appropriately. You know, I don't think it's something you could do constantly.
Sure.
And my personal feeling is, I am not running a jail. I want to trust my kids, I want to work with my kids, and I want to be able to have them trust us and help them to work with us. So I think it's a tool for us
Sure.
that we can use down the road.
Great. Thanks for that. That's a great answer. So under page 18, and this may be also a question for Superintendent Benton, and probably relates to state law that I just didn't have a chance to look up, but under withdrawal from school, there's no mention of needing a parent's permission or approval to withdraw from school? And I'm wondering if that is an omission or if that is, in fact, the law?
Legally, 16 years old. And the reality is, I tell every kid that comes to my office and says, I don't want to go to school anymore, well, you can't leave without my signature. But the, you know, the idea is, okay, kid, the student goes to guidance, talks to their guidance counselor, guidance counselor immediately involves the parent, parent, grandparent, whoever the guardian may be. Sometimes it's a student who does not live in that normal structure that we all know of, home with mom and dad. And it's more of a decision-making of what we can do with the student. Do we try and get them involved in dual enrollment programs? Do we try and get them involved in the GED program? Do we try and get them involved in night school? Couple of the area schools offer night programs. I hate to drop a kid like that because you just, you can't get them back. It's tough to get them back.
Sure.
But it's one of the things that a student, a 17-year-old student can come in and sign themselves out, or an 18-year-old student can sign themselves out of school without a parent's knowledge, so.
I'm glad you do have a procedure in place, though, that you try to notify the parents or ask the students to notify the parents, obviously.
There's, you could guarantee that there is a series of meetings that will occur related to that, bringing parents in, talking with parents, talking with teachers, changing, you know, making some adjustments, trying all of the tricks that we know before we let that happen. Because I think if we get to that point, we failed. We failed that kid and we have to figure out how to, how to get, you know, kind of change that or point them in a direction that will be most helpful for them.
Sure, sure. My final question, page 45. Let's see, so under academic eligibility regarding student activities and athletics, I was just wondering if any thought, and again, you know, this is a procedure, I believe, but I'm just asking the question for informational purposes. I was wondering if there was any thought of ever raising the average, you know, above a 63 for a student to be eligible to participate in extracurricular activities?
I believe before my time, now this is my seventh year coming up, there was some conversation. Our current policy is at a higher level than the MIAA policy. The MIAA policy is strictly passing four classes that are equal to an English class. Ours has bigger teeth, you know, not as many as we'd like, you know. Would we rather have it 70 or 80?
Right.
Yes, but we also have to realize that it is another tool for us to keep kids in the game and I don't want to wipe that student out who's on the edge, who's working hard and stuck there. But certainly there could be conversation, but I just, I like to make sure there's a lot of tools available to us to keep kids in the game that are, that may be on the fence and may be, you know,
Sure.
not academically a student and not, you know, not looking at college, but, you know, they may, they just may need that sport to keep them in the game.
Sure, I hear you there. And I have more questions, but they'll be asked at another time perhaps. And, but thank you very much for answering my questions. Really appreciate it.
Anything else? Dr. Quick?
I noticed on page 20, where it talks about, talks about the physicals, it does say, where it says immunizations, all students must be complete, et cetera, et cetera. Massachusetts law allows religious exemption from physical exams or screenings, but this specific paragraph is specific to immunizations and immunizations and physical examinations aren't one of the same. So I don't know if that's something that has to be specifically stated where it says exemption from immunization.
As far as I know, students are not exempt from immunizations.
They can be.
But the physical, the physical screening and the medical, that medical side?
No, legally, there is, you can, it's the same exact form for the physical exam for the immunizations. So that's why I wanted to just point that out. Because here it just says physical examinations or screenings, but it doesn't say specifically immunizations.
I want to have to check with Doreen Crowe. Honestly, I see exactly what you're saying.
No, that came up in conversation this summer with a group of parents. And they were talking about some of the parents these days who, even though there is no evidence, they're saying, who refuse to have their children, one of the children at this party has never been immunized. And it led to a discussion about that and they asked me, would that child be allowed in the school? And I said, I really don't know.
I need to get you back, I need to have Doreen clarify it. We picked a point.
Because we didn't know that either. That's interesting, it should have come up.
Yeah, no, I've done my research because my, I have the same issue with my daughter, so.
Yeah. That's interesting. Okay, any other questions or comments? I just have one, Mr. Tracy, on page 29, I'm going back to this. You don't have to tell us now, but before our policy committee meets, I would really like to know if this electronic device thing is working? Because it's still the same thing that I often hear about. It's so annoying to teachers, the whole thing of the students having electronic devices in their classrooms. I don't know what we do about it, but I just don't know if this is strong enough for both the high school and the middle school. It's been a concern of mine since I was teaching. When I told this student to go down to the office, I was taking away the cell phone and the whole class said, if we all have one, can he keep it? And I went, you couldn't possibly all have one. I mean, this was years ago. And boy, they all had one. Every one of them. It was, it's incredible. I've had this argument with so many parents, there is no need for it. It disturbs the, I think it disturbs the flow of the schools, of what's happening in the classes. And so I don't know if this is working.
I will get to some research on that and bring it back to you. I do know this because I get the calls too and it's sad, but both the high school and the middle school have consequences. And one of them is that the third offense that they kept the year. And I have to say that the behavior of parents has not been
Conducive.
of one respect when dealing with that and believe that they own that piece of equipment and they deserve to have it back. So we're not getting the cooperation that we need. The other piece I need to say is, again, I think as in school system, educationally, we have to relook at all these electronic devices because there are a lot of wonderful ways of using them as educational tools. And I know it's controversial, but I think that it's the way of the future. And I'd rather be using them, teaching kids to use them the right way
Right.
than trying to hide them, confiscate them during the days. I know that, you know, they are used for cheating. It's the new way of doing it instead of writing it on your hand.
Yep.
And that's sad. I would hope that we can address the cause. Because I think the cause is pressure being put on some of these students to succeed at a higher level than maybe they should be asked. I.e., students that are in all AP classes that are, you know,
Yes.
putting pressure on themselves to get the grades. And I talk about this not just from the Wilmington perspective, but my own home community has a really serious issue with cheating in AP classes because of pressure put on students. So I think we need to look at the cause. And I think we need to do more educating of parents around the whole cell phone piece. There is a problem in that if there were a bomb scare, we can't have phones going off. That could, I mean, and the fire chief is very clear that that, you know, that could put all of us in harm's way. So there's lots of different pieces to the electronical device section in the handbook. And I'd love to have the discussion. Because I think we need to start having these kinds of discussions around how do we, you know, look at something that, you know, we're using as a penalty and turn it into an educational device.
It's taking up too much time. Mr. Tracy?
It goes hand in hand with the social networking piece that's in here also.
Yes, I like that number six, page six.
When you look at the social networking piece and the actual power of social networking, coupling it with tools, I mean, I'm as guilty as anybody of having gadgets. I have more gadgets than you could imagine. But the reality is, we have to look at how schools will be different. We're training kids for a future we have no idea what it is. We're training kids for jobs that don't exist. We're training kids for, you know, a future that changes within a four- or five-year increment completely. So we have to, I think, look at structure of what we do and the tools that are available and how we can integrate them to be successful and rather creating, I mean, it's a huge controversy all the time. And it is certainly a tool that we could take advantage of. For example, textbooks, I can, I can get a kid with a BlackBerry, you know, full text in their BlackBerry, saving us $105, you know, the price of a chemistry book. So there are some things that we really do need to look at to be able to integrate these tools and to get people more comfortable. But also, it's based around the structure of schools. The agrarian structure, one through seven periods and sitting in classrooms, is going to go away. It's going to happen because private monies will force that to happen. And I think, you know, as we look at it now and try to guess what's going to happen three years from now, what type of jobs will be available for kids 10 years from now, we will find that if we take the time to learn to integrate what's useful and help kids to understand it, I mean, we all, we all see kids in second grade with cell phones. So do those kids really know the power of what they have in their hand and what's going on? Not really. So it's, again, schools have to begin to educate kids about these tools earlier on and then integrate them as best we can. There's a million things you can do with an iPod educationally that, you know, we probably wouldn't want to admit because we have these policies, but goodness gracious, I could change the total tone of a class by involving an iPod Touch in some of what's going on. So we really do need to have the conversation and we really need to take some risks. I think we need to take a few risks. There are a couple of communities who dropped the rules altogether right next to us. I worked with their principals pretty closely and watching what's going on and getting some idea of how it's going. So we want to, you know, kind of take that data that's already there and try and use that to make our own decisions. Except we're planning for something that's not there down the road.
We need to, you'll see it at Bajuta and Capital Project, but we need to upgrade the infrastructure. We don't have the capacity right now to do what we want with the technology in all the classrooms. And although, I'm sure, because I'd be the same, and I am the same way, you know, I complain about lack of access, there's a reason why. We don't have the capacity. We need to address that piece and we're going to be working with the town around fiber upgrade because we have to do that. The other piece I just wanted to talk about is, and I'll use Facebook as the example, you know, I think we need to educate the students. It's not happening at home and so maybe we need to do it because it can be a great, a great social network for students who are timid or shy and, you know, want to find a way of reaching out to other children. But we need to teach them the safeguards. We need to teach them how you use the tools properly. And I think, you know, you can make the analogy with books in the library. I mean, there are, you know, a book, there's, or books in, magazines sold at, you know, CVS, they're appropriate magazines for different age levels and you just need to teach kids. Instead of banning, I think it makes sense to have the conversation. The project Eric's talking about with the technology and my serving on this with 30 other superintendents last year on a, on a committee, a task force looking at what 21st century education looks like, is exciting, but it's also scary because of the unknowns. And I think that if we don't start the conversation soon, when it comes to hopefully building a new high school, we're going to be in trouble because I don't want to build a 20th century high school. I don't, I think that would be a disservice to this community. And we're going to be looking at blended education down the road. And blended education means some in school, some online, at home. And I think we need to think outside the box in what we want the four walls to look like. And that should be driven by the educational program and what our vision of what education for Wilmington students should be. So it's an exciting time to be in education and to be in Wilmington.
It is. It's very exciting. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I love the idea of already thinking about getting the kids to use their, their technology in the classroom. I mean, the power of a smartphone right now is just, it's insane. It's incredible. I've had an iPhone now for about five days and I'm completely hooked. I went from a BlackBerry.
There are all sides of me.
I went from the BlackBerry to the iPhone and I don't even, the BlackBerry's like, that's old technology now, you know? It's crazy.
She'll be asking for a new one.
But, you know, just in this, you know, the iPhone is already on its fourth generation. So these kids are going to be getting, you know, third-generation ones as hand-me-downs that are just, have incredible power on them. So whether it's a BlackBerry, an iPhone, a tablet, a Kindle, anything, I mean, just any way that we can save money on books. And then when the new edition comes out, you know, we pay for the PDF instead of paying for 400 bucks. I mean, it's a huge savings and it's, plus, if the kids are on their phones reading a book or doing some work, they're not texting. And they're not, and they're not, well, you know, you know what I'm saying? But if they're using it to learn, if they have to learn with it, yeah. So.
Interesting.
That is a great, great idea.
Mr. Mckeezy?
I, you know, I understand the whole thing about technology, making sure kids know what's going on. But I also go back to Mrs. Benton's comment about the infrastructure and us not having the proper tools or the proper funding for this because, I mean, I admit, I don't have an iPhone. I have the old standard phone. I mean, because I dropped the thing so many times, I don't want to upgrade. You know, I'm just old-fashioned that way. You know, it lasts forever. But the thing is though, you know, how are you going to, you know, standardize that for, everyone's got to have an iPhone, everyone's got to have a smartphone? Or are you just, these other things complicate things where parents don't want to have the kids have the services or some people just won't have a, you know, a cellphone until they're out of the house or something like that. So these are other things to think about because you may have those kids, those families too, who just can't afford it as well. I mean, a cellphone minimum package is like 35 bucks a month and you add other services. You know, it's just, these are other things you just really need to think about in the community, you know? Not everybody has an iPhone, so just, again, just go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of what I was saying was whether it's the iPhone or the BlackBerry
Or a tablet.
And, you know, certainly something the school could supplement by having a couple of Kindles on hand. We could also have a couple of print books on hand, but instead of having to buy 400 print books for history, 400 print books for math, you're buying four. You're buying five. We have a couple of tablets, whether it's an iPad or a Kindle or whatever, you have that on hand, which is easier to upgrade for the, and because we do, we have a, we have a huge array of people that live in this town. We have extremely wealthy and we have the families that are just getting by and everyone in between. So we do have to be conscientious of that and, you know, I see what you're saying, but there's just, there's a way to use every bit of technology that the kids already have and supplement it with infrastructure, with hopefully new construction and learning.
Mr. Tracy?
And certainly that's part of what Mrs. Benton was talking about with the blended educational model. You're looking at, you need to look at it from the educational perspective. Research dictates that kids learn in different ways, adults learn in different ways. Some kids can use a Kindle, some kids can't. And what you're seeing these companies do, you know, a three-year transition to four generations and a two-year transition to four or five generations, those generations are now breaking off where, I'll use a Nook for as an example, I have a Nook at home and you can now take Nooks off where anywhere. and you can now take Nooks software anywhere. You can get it on your computer, same software that's on the device that you would, you know, pay $149 for, for free now, and you can get it on your phone and you can get it, you know, so they're starting to fragment these technologies so that they meet the needs of all of those kind of diversities that are built into the economy, that are built into socioeconomic structure across the nation. You know, third-world countries now are pulling up just as quickly as these evolutions of technology. So, I think looking at it from the perspective of blended education makes the most sense for us, including looking at, you know, the future of our schools, our buildings, the infrastructure of the town. You know, the power of this town could be driven by a strong fiber network and a community interactive model, so.
Wow. Mr. Vale.
This has been an absolutely fascinating discussion, one I'm very excited by. And I just wanted to commend Mr. Tracy and Mrs. Benton for their view as to the future of technology and their thoughts about possibly how to integrate it in and the implications for the school district. I would just say that I will support them in this regard in any way that I can as a member of the committee. I mean, this is something that we've been struggling with now for a little while, at least, you know, I've only been on the committee for about a year, but I've seen this come up and have been trying to think in a forward-looking manner with respect to some of these issues. And the one thing I'll add that isn't basically totally echoing what everyone's already said is that it just strikes me that here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I think we have probably the, if not the world-leading, certainly among the world-leading bastion of technology companies, everything from biotechnology to IT to clean tech, nanotech, coming out of all of the universities and colleges and world-leading organizations right here. So, there's got to be some way, as we try to struggle with this, to interface with the economic development agencies and in the business community here in town. I mean, we could draw on, you know, analog devices and a number of major corporations that are right at our back door to try and get some sense for the skill set and the knowledge set and the database that our kids are going to need to have five, 10, 15, 20 years out. Not that any of those companies really have crystal balls either, but it's a resource that we do have available to us and we've got to figure out a way to try and get that information as we make the best decisions we can, as we look at the assets and the infrastructure here and how to make an investment that's going to last for the next 50 years, the next two generations. I mean, we need to be ready with the embedded capabilities, not that we know what that is, but I imagine if we can build this infrastructure out the right way, then it becomes a lot easier to, you know, hang little doodads off the end of the pipes or, you know, bring other things in as they come on board to augment stuff if we have it built in and if things are easily reconfigurable, it's going to serve us very, very well and make the investment that the taxpayers in this community are going to make pay off in the medium to long term.
Thank you, Mr. Vale. Does anyone have any more questions on the handbook? I just have one more thing, Mr. Tracy. Mrs. Benton had mentioned in her opening of school report that you were going to give a brief overview of the newly adopted Common Core and discuss instruction. I'm not asking about that, but I'm asking, I'm very concerned about the newly adopted Common Core. And you mentioned some, the math being, you've already been able to see that the math has a connection. What are you feeling as far as us having to redo this Common Core away from the educational reform standards that we've already done? Do you think this is going to be, like I do, it's going to be a horrendous chore for us or do you think, do you have any information at this point?
In preparing for the presentation that I did for the administrators last week, when you look at the Common Core, there are many more similarities than there are differences.
Right.
There's a lot of structural difference with how they're designed and how they're presented. I don't think that's a roadblock for us. I think, given the quality of the educators we have in this system and what they know individually about their own area, specifically a science teacher or an English teacher, about the frameworks, most of them recite them in their sleep. So, when they start to talk about alignment, I think the alignment, it'll take us some time and certainly some energy, but we can do that. I don't think we'll have a major problem with that. I think the issue we'll run into is balancing that with what they'll do with assessment. I think assessment may change over the next five years. I just don't see how. I really don't. I don't think anybody knows how. I just think they're starting the conversations at the federal and the state level. But, because we have 50 different assessments, you know, within, you know, some states, two states, I think, share the same assessment, but most of the states have their own different type of assessment. We have the MCAS. The MCAS has to be different if we're going to follow that Common Core model. They're going to have to look at that assessment differently and I think that will be probably the more ambiguous of the thing, but I think alignment for us is just time and energy.
Mrs. Benton.
I think the biggest change that I noticed is in the English Language Arts where the Common Core, there's more of a focus on nonfiction.
Oh, which they've always said we needed to have more.
That versus the states, which was more slated towards fiction.
Yeah.
However, in Wilmington, in our curriculum, we've been doing that, so I don't see the shift as great. I do think and I do hope and I will always, as an educator, want our teachers to teach the classics. They're always going to be classics and they should, we should expose our children to the classics, no matter what standards come down. I want to see that in the curriculum. The other piece is that we noticed, well, that I noticed is that some of the standards in the Common Core are at an older level. So, for example, there is some
Oh, that's good.
Math and reading standards that we, our students should master by the end of second grade, that in the Common Core, you don't master till the end of fourth grade. So, what Mr. Tracy's talking about is the work we need to do is relook at what we're doing in what grades and do we still want to continue to do it at those grades? But, the assessment is going to move the, whatever kind of assessment we end up with is going to move, shape the curriculum.
I'm not sure if the public realizes how much work has been involved by members of school systems in doing the educational frameworks and the years and years and years of all of us working on that. And for arbitrarily this to just be ripped out by people up here, it really frosts me.
Well, we all
We all probably feel the same way. Go ahead, Mrs. Benton.
No, I was going to say something and I probably shouldn't, but I'm
Okay, don't then.
A lot of it has had to do with
With, yes, the race to the top money.
Race to the top rent.
Yeah.
I don't care what anybody says, that's the truth of it. And the unfortunate piece is, communities like Wilmington lose out because we're not Title I communities that get a large amount of money from the federal government. Until they change the formula and start funding, you've got me on a roll tonight, funding middle-class American programs, you're going to see the elimination of public education, I believe.
Right.
And that's scary, so.
It is scary.
Sorry.
I think it's good at the beginning of the year to get all of this out because we'll know what we're going to work on. Mr. Mckaysie.
Yeah. First of all, I think it's terrible you allow politics to enter education. It's the wrong thing to do. But, Mr. Tracy, we talked about the assessment, the MCAS, and what needs to change and we're going to the Common Core standards. What if, because now they don't know what they're doing and they haven't given us any direction of what's going to happen in the assessment, what if we stay with MCAS the next two or three years and we're going to the Common Core? Does that mean a lot of our kids are going to start failing the MCAS, we're going to be starting dropping off, our levels are going to come down? Is that what Common Core is going to do with MCAS if MCAS doesn't change?
I would never predict what they would put in the road ahead of us, but the reality is, there's great teaching going on in Wilmington. So, whatever happens, our kids are strong and they come out strong now. I mean, when you look around, our kids come out ahead. I mean, they read well, they write well, they, you know, there are areas that we know we have to work on and I think our focus has to be on making sure our kids write well, making sure our kids compute well, making sure our kids comprehend what they're reading. And the other pieces will fall into place because the standard is just, it's a step and we can get kids through those steps. It's, you know, even with the adjustments between the two, the Common Core and the Massachusetts framework, it's all still going to come down to good, solid teaching and teaching kids, not teaching curriculum.
As far as the young cast question, Mr. Mckaysie, the goal, as we all know of No Child Left Behind, was by 2014 that all students would pass. In reality, I can't tell you that everyone in Wilmington is going to, will meet that goal. And the way that it's framed and the way that we see in the pattern, each year, more schools in more districts in Massachusetts have larger groups in the needs improvement or not making adequate yearly progress because of the statistical number of points that one has to make in order to show improvement is, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. So, I think what we need to do is just take every child from where they are and try and give them a year's worth of growth every year. But, there are some children that will never pass an MCAS until they get to the high school. And the reason that they're able to pass them at the high school level, on top of all the good teaching and coaching, is if you look at the reality of the standards of what's needed to pass an MCAS at 10th grade level versus what's needed to pass an MCAS at 8th grade level, you will see a huge difference. 33 items, I believe, in the 7th grade tests you need to pass to get to needs improvement. At the high school, it's 16. So, MCAS is just one piece of the puzzle of what is about the students. What I hope the Common Core does is puts in a performance piece to the assessment because right now, all we are is testing skills, reading, writing, arithmetic. We're not testing 21st century incorporation of communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking. And we need to find a way to assess those skills in a common assessment that will help kids.
All right. I guess my question is more framed around the comment that you had made earlier that they're changing the level, but certain kids need to meet a standard. Are we still going to push for, you know, they need to, you know, we'd like to see them learning this by second grade, but if kids fall off, then finally they have to learn it by fourth, but we're still going to push for an early
If they change the assessment, we'll still keep our same standards. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's what I'm getting to. If we can be aggressive as we can to get these kids to learn and to advance, that's what I'd like to see instead of saying, oh, course standard says they have to learn until fourth, third grade. If we can get them to learn in second or third grade, that's what I'd like to see.
Another example is the shift in mathematics. Algebra to 8th grade, sophomores are now taking algebra II. That's keeping ahead of the pack.
And I think we have to look at our science at the high school and shifting when we teach biology to think about raising the standard in that area.
And I'd also have to say, Mr. Mckaysie, that for some kids, 2nd grade is way too early to learn certain things because developmentally, they're not there. And by 4th grade, we might find that many more of the kids pass it without a problem. And we're putting a pressure on them. The younger children are the ones that bother me the most. You're putting a pressure on them to be at a certain standard when developmentally, it's known that it probably can't happen for most of the kids. So, that's what we used to always fight in, when we were trying to put the frameworks together with the curriculum, it would always be, we know that the 9th graders cannot do this as well as the 10th graders or the 11th graders. Why do they have to have it in the 9th grade? Because by the time the kids get into 10th or 11th, we've built up the structure for them and they can handle it. What is the point of all these tests? The point is to let children be successful and to have a certain amount of information when they leave us, but not to put things in their way, to put blocks in their way. It's just so bothers me. That's not what it's about, you know, so. Anyway, anything else for Mr. Tracy? He's going to be, he's going to say, I can't wait to sit in that seat because there won't be any questions.
It's way about the end of the day.
Yeah, just one comment. I feel that we put you in a bit of a hot seat tonight and you had some great answers. You really did. I really appreciate your answers, the honesty and the absolute, how much you care for the students is palpable and I just want to thank you for that. You're doing a great job and thank you for your answers tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And your information.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. McMinim.
Yes. Right, Ms. McMinim, up.
Step up.
Do you need to vote on the
No, next meeting.
Next meeting.
We need to get Dr. Pecation on the immunization.
Good evening, Ms. McMinim.
Good evening.
I promise you, you won't have the same
No, it's not a problem at all.
We've got all the questions answered, I think.
Sure, no problem. Actually, Mr. Tracy's passing out. I actually made some of the adjustments on some typos and some spacing and some formatting issues.
Oh, thank you.
As Mr. Tracy also said with his handbook, over the past couple of years, coming on board, a lot of cutting and pasting and new policies, some of the spacing and the fonts have not always gelled. So, we tried to align that with our spacing and some little typos and wording, as Mr. Tracy mentioned, just specific words that help to clarify things. Thank you. Most of our changes had to do with that and also sort of calendar changes, updates to the MCAS calendar toward the end of the handbook. A lot of ours focused on the core values that we have developed over the past couple of years and our mission statement. Of course, we included the new policy with bullying, as you all saw, and we updated our health area as well. I would like to bring, just to your attention, one of the edits on page 34. We actually did put in a statement on social networking, specifically at the middle school level because we find that it's just, we wanted people to know as an administration and as a school faculty, what we believe about students who come into our building, some at 10 and a half, and 10, 11, 12-year-old students really do not have the capacity to have a responsibility to maintain and use safely and appropriately a social networking site like Facebook or MySpace. They really don't have the maturity. And unless parents are completely policing and really on board and watching what they do and the computers in a common area like the kitchen or the dining room, that's the safe way, but not everybody does it that way. So, we just put forth a statement of what we believe is safe and appropriate for our middle school students. We are not their parents, but we thought we would, some people do look to us as experts sometime with, working with young adolescents, and that's what we believe. We also did just some staffing changes and some name changes and recently, at the beginning of the month, we appointed Mrs. Hope Doran as our new assistant principal and she has been at the middle school teaching science for eight years. And she was also a member of our district-wide professional development committee and she is truly dedicated and committed to the children here in Wilmington. So, just wanted to bring that to your note.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Right there.
Oh, Mr. Hayes, sorry.
So, in the interest of time, I'm going to limit myself to two questions. Okay. So, on page 22, regarding the backpacks, so we don't allow a student at the middle schools to carry around their backpack. We make them put it in their locker. And then, I noted, and you probably get asked this all the time, on page 13 with the master schedule, you don't have breaks in between periods. On the bottom of the page, it says, each team will determine a reasonable locker break schedule at each grade level. So, I was wondering if you can kind of put that all together for me and do students have sufficient time to go to their lockers to get the materials they need from their backpack?
Absolutely. Great question. And safety-wise, it has been very common around the area for middle schools, really not to have students carrying their backpacks during the school day. And that is something that we're very comfortable with. In general, the parents are very comfortable with and the students become very accustomed to it. So, they do have access to their locker in the morning, right before homeroom. They gather up their books perhaps for first, second, perhaps third period. But, let's say, for example, a 6th grader has a unified arts class, third period, and they're headed to gym or music or art, perhaps in another area of the building, and especially when they're headed to physical education, you know, they don't want to be carrying three subjects of books. The team will designate, your locker break is between periods two and three. Then, you come back from phys ed or music or art or tech ed and you go back and you get your belongings for the next two or three core subjects. And then, it's lunchtime. So, at that point, you have access to your locker, go drop off your books, pick up your lunch, head to the cafeteria. So, they do organize it so students really are not carrying more than two, perhaps three subjects. And perhaps that third subject might only be a folder, might not be a text in a binder. It might just be a specialist that has a folder, let's say, for music. It might just be a specialist that has a folder, let's say, for music. So it is very appropriate. And as you noticed also on the bell schedule, that we do know also that we're working with middle school students. And when we did overhaul our master schedule a few years back, we made note that the last lunch of the day, which we have assigned to 8th graders, does begin at 12:20-ish. And so therefore, we do allow a morning snack in between 2nd and 3rd period. We call it a working snack, and we like a healthy snack. But the teachers and the students really have great responsibility of bringing in their snack. And as they're plopping down their do-now or their starter or their assignment for the evening, they're sort of working and snacking and getting rid of all the trash.
Unfortunately, I'm a big fan of working snacks, too. That's great. That's great. And my second question, and this may be more for Superintendent Benton. I was just wondering why the middle school summer school is actually held at the high school? I'm sorry, Mr. Benton, yeah, Mr. Tracy, sorry.
It really works out to logistics. We have one summer school director who manages both of those programs. And having it here is much more easy to be able to manage the different groups of kids.
It's one central point for registration. There's one brochure for each of the levels, and questions can be directed to one person.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Quick. I just, about the statement on social networking and electronic communications, I just was wondering if maybe, and this might be a foolish request, but the fact of the matter is, is that for most of these middle school students, these sites are actually illegal for them to be on.
Right.
So I'm wondering if it's something that we should mention that in that also.
We put out a sentence. We found that out last year when we had some issues with some cyberbullying. And they raised their hand and they were 13, and they weren't supposed to be on period.
Because I'm sure some of the parents, even though we're having these, you know.
It's a good reminder.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a sentence we can add in.
Thank you.
Ms. Marchesi.
I guess as for my own personal benefit, for terms of car rides, I know you can't bring kids to school before 7:00. My daughter's going to 6th grade this year. Which end of the building is Challenger? If you're looking at, is it left or right?
If you're looking at the building, it's on the left.
Thank you.
And somebody taught me this my first day. When you're looking, it goes in order alphabetically, C, D, E. Challenger, Discovery, Explorer. So now I can find my way.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mrs. Benton.
This is almost like a setup. I'm glad you just said that because this is a campaign of mine around, and the community needs to clearly understand this. Middle school doors will not open until 7:00. I discovered last year, we discovered that we had about 20 students who were being dropped off as early as 6:05. And there are no adult supervision in the building. And they were, these students were in an empty building. So we, as a team, have decided to not open the doors until 7:00 because we can't take that risk. Students are too young to be in the building. So thank you, Mr. Marchesi. I was going to add it, say it later on in the public section. And I love that alphabetical order. Now I know it. I didn't know that.
That's great. Thank you.
And it is just important just to add the point. In the auditorium, when the 6th graders come in in the morning and in the cafeteria, there is administrative supervision and there is teacher supervision. And so that's the best opportunity. People are interacting. Everybody is supervised. And then the bell rings and kids are dismissed appropriately to their homeroom by grade level and by stairwell. And it's just keeping order in the building. It's just a safety issue.
Well, that's good. Grade level and stairwell. Excellent. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. McMenamin. Thank you for spending the time with us tonight.
Not a problem.
All right. Oh, I lost this. And our last item of business is the green repair program.
On August 11th, we received an email from the Massachusetts School Building Authority saying that they were inviting schools to put in statements of interest for green repair programs. That included replacement of roofs, windows, and/or boilers. And as you all know, the town meeting had approved the expenditure of $715,000 for the replacement of the windows at Shawshing two town meetings ago. And we're in that process. I called the MSBA and asked if we would be eligible to apply, and they said yes. I talked with the town manager and said to him that I would like to submit an application. And he said, the deadline soon. And I said, I'll get it done, and it's before you this evening. There is a motion that I would need you to vote. And then I will go to the selectmen's meeting on September 13th, and we will be able to get in under the deadline. If we are accepted, we will get back approximately 45% of the cost of the windows, which means we could do another project. So I'm strongly recommending. I didn't think I'd be doing a statement of interest again in a long time, but.
I wasn't sure if this was the.
That is the whole motion.
That's what I thought.
Form of the vote has to be according to the state.
Okay. Do we have, can we look at the last two pages, please? This is the vote right here that we'll have to take. Okay. Instead of me reading the whole thing and then the next person reading the whole thing, I'll have whoever'd like to put this motion forward. Could you please read this for us? Mr. Marchesi.
Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on August 25th, the school committee Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest dated August 18, 2010, for the Shawshing School located at 298 Shawshing Avenue in Wilmington, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which Wilmington may be invited to apply to Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement of windows at the Shawshing School to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs. Existing windows are not energy-efficient, leading to significant heat loss. Windows are not weather-tight, leading to leaks during wind-driven rain events. The thermal pane windows will reduce heating costs and will eliminate window leaks. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application. The awarding of, excuse me, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment for the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the Wilmington District to filing an application for funding with Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you, Ms. Marchesi. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this, except that it's lengthy?
Just a comment.
Mr. Hayes.
You know, this was, I learned a lot from this document. And I did want to point out some of the ways that the school district has been attempting to reduce energy consumption, turning off the lights when a classroom is unoccupied, and they're now considering occupancy sensors. So if people are not in the room, they'll automatically shut off. Thermostat settings in rooms to 78 during warmer months and 68 during cooler months. You don't prop open doors. You reuse paper, recycle paper, shut off all commuters automatically during the evening hours. And you've recently replaced lights in the cafeteria and gymnasium. And that's all just at the Shawshing School. So, I mean, congratulations. That's, you're certainly conserving as much energy as you can.
They even have to put in about recycling the paper, using the paper. I mean, it's really so thoroughly done. I can't imagine that we won't get this.
Just to call to your attention, the, Mr. Righiero has been working with the town site. If you look at page 2, the bottom, the timeline, they're about to interview? Next week, right?
Next week.
Yeah. So the town has moved forward with the work. I don't, you know, we don't have to start at the beginning. The MSBA will take that into consideration. Basically, what we're asking them to do is fund a piece of it.
Yeah, that's excellent.
Bring verse.
I need to sign this, too. Okay. Yes.
So is there a schedule now, looking ahead? Obviously, the mechanical and HVAC systems are very old. And at the end of their useful life, probably beyond their useful life at 40 years. Is there a mechanism now to look ahead after replacing those and upgrading those systems?
When I was talking earlier about in the strategic plan, a capital plan for the elementary, that's what we're working on with the town. So that you, we can look forward and, you know, anticipate, say, you know, now that we have all this information, possibly for next year, we replace the boilers in two of the elementary schools in the following year, the roof, whatever it is. We need to, that's what we're working on. And, you know, the good news is, MSBA never did this before. Awarded funds for renovations and.
So this is the green repair program? Are there specific requirements under the SBA program to make sure that it's quote-unquote "green"?
Just what you read in this statement of interest. There's no, I mean, we haven't heard.
Is there no requirement that the windows be of a specific quality? Energy star or higher rated or fiberglass-backed or something like that?
On those requirements?
No. We'll find out when we go for the meeting.
That'd be great. I mean, green should mean something above and beyond just what standard window is. That you can get at home, deep or lows.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? It follows in favor of the motion. Unanimous, Kim. Thank you. All right. Delegations, seeing none tonight, will move on. Board members, questions and comments? Mr. Veil, it's your lucky night. You're first. Going that way to this way.
I came so prepared, too. I wrote all these comments. No, I didn't. Well, it's nice to be back. I want to welcome everybody back to school, the new staff especially. Welcome to, I guess I should say, welcome to Wilmington. The, I think the students are in for another great year. They have some upgraded facilities to work with, some new technologies. I know a staff administration and committee in town that cares very much about the quality of their education. I'm looking forward to working productively with all of my colleagues on the committee, as well as members of the administration and interested parents as I attempt to do my job over the next academic term. And I'm looking forward to an exciting year and an exciting series of decisions that we're all going to have to make collectively with respect to a couple of very significant issues for the town. Everything from curriculum improvement and Race to the Top and new core standards to infrastructure improvements and a bunch of policy matters, which all of that is going to present. So we have our work cut out for us, but I'm very excited, and I say we get going.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Quick.
Is that for extemporaneous?
That was very nice. I love it.
Well, I cannot believe that the summer's coming to an end. Very excited for a new year. I want to thank Mr. Tracy, Ms. McMenamin, for a wonderful job working on the handbooks. I hope my daughter was not watching tonight because if you're saying 2nd graders have cell phones, she's already asked me three or four times, I said, when you can pay for the monthly bill, you can have a cellphone. So if she sees this, she's going to be asking again, I'm sure. I'm just really looking forward to another great year, starting off with a bang.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Marchesi.
To the, to all the new teachers out there, administrators, everyone coming into the Wilmington school system, welcome. This is, it's a great community. It's a great school system. I'm looking forward to this year, to another great outstanding year of sports and extracurricular activities. I mean, Wilmington's always shined, and we have great kids. I know our winter sports programs, excuse me, our fall sports programs are kicking off this week. So good luck to all the teams out there. I'm hoping to see Wilmington really shine this year in football because next year they join the Middlesex League and can face my old hometown storm, so it'll be a lot of fun. So to the class of 2011, it begins. So get used to it. I'll be harassing you every single month and warning you that the clock is ticking. So it starts now. So enjoy the year. Thank you.
Mr. Higgins.
Yeah, I'd like to just welcome everyone back. Congratulations to Quincy for fitting extemporaneous into tonight's meeting. Job well done. I'd like to say good luck to the superintendent on achieving this year's goals. Although luck seems to follow those who work the hardest. So I'm sure it'll be another easy year for you to achieve all the goals. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes.
So no comments tonight, but a couple of questions, which I hope will serve as future agenda meeting items. And you all stole my thunder. So the Massachusetts Board of Education recently decided to eliminate our state's current education standards and replace them with the country's national education standards, known as the Common Core standards. I've read a lot of negative press about this change recently. Tom Birmingham, former state senate president and co-author of the 1993 Education Reform Act, called the decision a "high-risk, low-reward." I've been following the Rock the Schoolhouse, Boston Globe education blog, which recently detailed many of the reasons why Massachusetts should not have adopted the national education standards. Some of the reasons they put forward, the proposed national standards are not as good as Massachusetts' current standards. The proposed national standards are not internationally benchmarked, while the Massachusetts standards currently are. The future national assessments to be used by all states are not even developed yet, rendering them completely unproven. And the change in standards is being sold as saving money, but the change will require lots of money for new textbooks, new professional development, and new expenditures by local governments. So my first future question and agenda item would be, how will Massachusetts' adoption of the National Common Core education standards impact the Wilmington public school system? And you actually already touched on that a little bit.
We'll do a present from the present.
That would be great. And then similarly, my final question would be, the Board of Education adopted the Common Core education standards in part to obtain a one-time grant from the federal government through its Race to the Top program. Yesterday, it was announced that the state, on its second attempt, only after agreeing to the National Common Core standard, was successful in its efforts and received a total of $250 million, spread across the next four years, in additional federal education funding. And you somewhat already answered this question, too. But my question would be, how much of that $250 million, if any, is Wilmington going to enjoy? And what, if any, strings will be attached?
Okay. The second round application, the Wilmington Teachers Association voted not to participate. So we are one of the school communities that is not among the group that will receive funding. Good question. If we had participated, we would have received approximately $60,000 total over four years.
Well, thank you for the quick answer on that one. And that's all I have tonight.
With the Common Core, we will put a panel together. Be great.
Appreciate that.
Excellent. Thank you. And I'd just like to say, congratulations to everybody. It's one of the things I'm sure we are all aware of that, if you go by the schools, teachers' cars have been at the schools for the last couple of weeks. And they're always, that's extra time on their part. They're always there. They have their schoolrooms ready for our students to come in. They're very excited. That's one great thing about education. You have a start, a new start every single year. And you can learn your lessons from the previous year, and you can start onto new adventures in this year, the current year. So I just want to congratulate everybody. And it feels so good to be part of a group, a community group, that really, it means so much. I think we all take the children's, what's happening to the children and what we can do for the children to heart. And it's really important to us. And it's important to our staff and administrators and teachers and everyone in the staff, the librarians, the custodians, that people have such great relationships, the cafeteria workers. There's so many relationships that are formed in our school system, and we really appreciate it. And Dawn and Ron are videographers. We really appreciate them coming every week to put us on the TV. Okay, so. Other reports, subcommittee reports, none? Correspondence?
None this evening.
None this evening. Mrs. Benton.
Can I just make an announcement? I should have put on the superintendent reports. But I'm happy to say, thanks to the Wilmington School Committee's budget, we now have two coordinators for Destination Imagination. And there'll be alert now messages going out to the community encouraging parents to get their students involved. Two alumni of the program are going to be running the program. I've had quite a few meetings with them over the summer, and they're very excited about expanding the program. So asking the community to look out for those notices and get involved, it's a great program for your child.
Is it done after school? Not, and weekends, okay, after school and weekends. Great. Thank you. That's happy news, Mr. Veil.
Just, I've already said my little piece, but I mean, as far as sort of the goals of cooperation, collaboration, creativity, and there was another C.
Communication.
Communication, I think it's one of the best, best ways to try and bring a lot of things together and inculcate the 21st century level of skill. the 21st century level of skills that I think we need to be trying to inculcate in our students.
Excellent. And one other thing for agenda items, when we, future meeting dates and agenda items, the resolution committee for the Mass Association of School Committees passed seven resolutions, and we'll be putting them on the agenda at one of the October meetings for us to go over the seven items. And I know, Robert, were you going Wednesday? Were you planning to be there Wednesday to the convention?
You're putting me on the spot here. I'm...
You're putting me on the spot, because if Robert can't, let's put it this way.
Okay.
That's okay. If Robert can't be there Wednesday, this year, I can be there Wednesday.
I think maybe at this point.
Okay. So maybe Robert will be a delegate, and maybe I will be a delegate. We'll see, whichever one of us. But we have to go over the seven resolutions to know how to vote for us, so that will be coming up in October.
I didn't think the last year.
You bet. You didn't get the vote, because we forgot.
No, I just, I voted.
Oh, we did vote.
I voted, I just voted without any guidance from the committee.
No, see, I know, we didn't, we didn't take the votes last year for them.
Yeah, the committee didn't vote, so I was there.
No, we didn't. We completely...
That's right.
We knew it was my fault.
That's what I'm saying.
We weren't going to bring them.
I see.
I'm only kidding. That's why I'm bringing it up ahead of time, to make sure that I don't forget that we need to vote. Yeah, last year, that was my fault. I take full responsibility. But I know that you voted the right way.
I'm sure I did.
Whatever that way was.
Whatever that way was.
Thank you so much.
It was all good.
Okay.